...
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Campbell?
Here.
City Council, the first item on my agenda, our special rent application concerning Tom Gilmore is a new grandfather. We got Alicia Boyer. Alicia Boyer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening we have two new events and one wedding to be considered. Two new events is the, well, one is the two-two, two for the Boys and Girls Club, and that's a walk slash run that'll be held on March 22nd, 2015. And the second event is the endless stand-up paddle boat race, which will be held on June 15th, 2015. And lastly, the wedding to be held on November 29th on Fifth Avenue Beach. Excuse me, and the wedding, will they have fur coats on? I hope so.
I had fun, I think, but I think I called Moore. I asked you my questions about the paddle boat event, didn't I already? Okay, he answered my questions.
Okay. Thank you.
I think she's a bad boy in the tree.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by... Presentation by Don Semet for a long way to change to our city's redevelopment plan. Don?
And, uh, Mayor Council, before Mr. Semet comes forward, as some of you may know, I have a conflict of interest with regard to this particular matter, so I'm gonna be accusing myself. Here this evening is Jennifer Credidio from the firm of Commander Scott, your redevelopment council, and she'll be able to provide any legal advice to you with regard to this matter. Thank you.
By way of introduction, the state of New Jersey has recently revised its liquor license laws related to microbreweries and craft distilleries. And because of this, we've seen a great deal of interest in people wishing to open up those types of businesses within the city of Asbury Park. At your October 15th meeting, I presented to you an interest in someone opening a craft distillery in our central business district, which the planning board just looked at this past Monday, and will be referring their report back to you. But for today, there's interest and specific requests to amend the Main Street redevelopment plan to allow for a microbrewery to have frontage on Main Street, which is currently not permitted. So with that, by way of introduction, I'd like to introduce Kevin Kennedy, who is the attorney for the applicant, and he can describe exactly what is going to propose.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm an attorney with an office in Red Bank. I'm very happy to be here tonight. I appreciate you putting us on the agenda. I periodically appear before some of the city's land use boards, but I don't think I've had the opportunity or the privilege to officially appear before this body, so it's nice to officially meet you in that capacity. In a nutshell, as Mr. Semet just indicated, we are here. My clients would like to open and operate a microbrewery. And though we comply with the zone requirements and we comply with the Main Street redevelopment plan requirements overwhelmingly, there is a technical glitch. And in a nutshell, we are looking to respectfully requesting that the city council tweak in a site-specific fashion the Main Street redevelopment plan. And I'll get into that in a little bit, and the tweak, I guess, is that my not-so-fancy way of saying an amendment to the Main Street redevelopment plan. And Mayor, with your consent, what I'd like to do is to spend three or four minutes explaining who my clients are and what the type of operation is that they're proposing, just so you have an idea. And then I would like to spend another three or four minutes about what the redevelopment plan provides, how we comply, how, you know, what the technical issue is, and what the nature of the proposed amendment is. So with that having been said, again, my client is Dark City Brewing Company, LLC. And with me in the back, I have some of the principals, Kevin Sharp, Sal Malilio, and John Pomeroy. They're very excited, and it makes me very excited because my clients are so excited to be here. My clients have executed a lease, and it's to rent approximately 3,000 square feet of the property. It's at 801-803 Second Avenue slash 1,001 Main Street. And for the record, it's block 2702, lot 7. You're all familiar with the property. It's physically located on the corner of Main Street and Second Avenue, and it was a site that was previously occupied by thrifty treasurers. It's immediately adjacent to the Asbury Park Roastery Coffee Shop. So right now, there's a one-story commercial building at the site, and the property is in the commercial shopping zone and it's in the Main Street redevelopment area. And basically, as I indicated, what we're looking to do is to operate a microbrewery at the site, a facility which will conditionally allow for the production and consumption of craft beer. And the brewed beer will also be distributed from the premises to area restaurants and bars if this is a go. In real general terms, and you've seen some of the floor plans in your agenda packages, there's a production area and a tasting room, and there're gonna be about 15 tables in the area, in the facility. And what it is, is patrons would come in and in conjunction with a tour of the facility, they could have some limited onsite consumption, and it'll be brewed onsite. And basically, that's the nature of one aspect of it. The other aspect is, is the, if things go our way, we will, you know, distribute beer to some of the local restaurants and bars for distribution and for them to sell. Basically, just some of the details, just to give you some real basic details, the hours, and again, this is just an approximate because we're still starting the new business, and this would just be approximate hours for the public access, for the tasting and the tours. That would be basically Thursdays and Fridays from 5:00 in the afternoon to 8:00 or 9:00, and on Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 5:00 or 6:00. Again, those are just anticipated hours of operation. And just for full disclosure purposes, that doesn't mean that it's not open at other times. At other times, they will be brewing, but those are the anticipated hours of when the public would be able to come in and do it a taste and a tour. And the concept is that patrons will come in, take a tour of the facility, fall in love with the beer, and buy it and ask to buy it when they're out at the area restaurants. Let's see, what other things would you want to know? Deliveries. We do not have any type of tractor-trailer deliveries or anything like that. Limited deliveries we get would be from an average van, box truck, your typical UPS, Federal Express-type of truck. And I guess it's important to say, because it is a changing industry, we are not a bar, we are not a restaurant, we are not a brew pub. There's, you know, so it's nothing like that. And in terms of employees, we anticipate having three employees at the site at a time. That would be basically a head brewer and two brewer operators. And I think you heard a little bit about this, as Mr. Semet was just indicating at your October meeting, that in conjunction with this, the type of liquor license we need is a Class A limited brewery license. And that's something special and something unique. It's not your typical license that typically comes before this institution. And in a nutshell, some of the aspects of that license, and they are referenced in Mr. Semet's memorandum, it provides for a sale of limited amount of beer for off-site consumption and a limited onsite consumption in conjunction with a tour of the brewery. And I guess importantly, and I'm sorry, and this is a new regulation, it's a federal license and a state license involved, and there are requirements. You can't have food, it cannot be a restaurant. So when I said it would not be a bar, not be a restaurant, that is not just our preference, that is the licensing requirements. And as I was indicating, this is permitted under the commercial shopping zone regulations and the Main Street redevelopment plan with a little bit of a hitch. Because the, technically, this constitutes a light industrial or manufacturing use, and while it is permitted, there's a provision in the redevelopment plan that says that that light industrial or manufacturing aspect can't front on Main Street. And so part of our facility, as we're proposing, will front on Main Street, and that's what creates this issue that we have, what we're coming before you tonight. And although the applicants could theoretically redesign the interior layout of this microbrewery so as to avoid this conflict that I'm talking about with the plan, it's believed that it would materially compromise the overall effectiveness and appeal of the operation. And just for the record and full disclosure, when I heard this, I said to my clients, "Look, it's a big production, you know, I know you're in a hurry, you know, you're sensitive, why don't you just do it? And forget about coming to, applying for an amendment, forget about having the council, convince the council, and then have it forwarded to the planning board, why don't you just, you know, make the interior modifications that you can to eliminate that?" And the client said, "Well, you know, that is possible, but we really don't want to do it because we don't think that's the best way to do it, we don't think that's the right way to do it." And what they've said is, "The loss of frontage on Main Street would materially limit, reduce the size of the microbrewery, particularly the tasting room, and creating and starting any business is always a challenge," so they didn't want to be sort of hamstrung right rate to begin with. And it also, they thought that, you know, the way to address that issue would be to put up a dummy wall so that it wouldn't front on Main Street. And we basically creating two separate uses, and my clients thought, "Oh, that's really not, you know, such a great idea, and it would be too smaller spaces, and it's not really advantageous to my clients or for, to the city." And they basically said, "First, that such a separation would materially decrease the size of the microbrewery, and would also," and this is important, "it would lose access to the windows that currently have frontage on Main Street." And I guess the former thrifty treasurers use those windows to their advantage. And it would also, having those windows would obviously provide our existing space, you know, access that to a lot, you know, south, southeastern exposure and sunlight, and would also give the place an refreshing, airy feeling, which would just be overall conducive to the city. And my clients were really very, very sensitive about that and very much focused on that because they thought that was a really important part. And, you know, shame on me, I learned a lesson in that, you know, hey, you know, don't always take the easier route because if in the end, they didn't, my clients did not want to sacrifice ease for the overall effectiveness and appeal of the proposal. So that's the nature of the operation. And in terms of the redevelopment plan that we're looking for, we're looking for that site-specific amendment to allow this aspect to front on Main Street. And I won't repeat all the reasons, but in my memo, which I think was attached to your, in your package, there were a lot of sound reasons, and including, "The operation of the microbrewery will likely spur much other needed redevelopment in the Main Street area." And I also, step back for a moment, I want to, because it would be remiss if I did not say this, one of my clients' overwhelming, overwhelming desires is to be in Asbury Park, but to also to be in this Main Street area. And I probably haven't said that enough, I should have been the first thing I said, but I think that is, that is an important overriding element. And we also think that the operation of the microbrewery at the site will likely serve as a catalyst for other future redevelopment in the area. And it's also gonna serve as a, you know, what we hope will be a destination point for tourists, shoppers, and city residents alike. Increasing foot traffic in the area, which is one of the main, at least from my review, is one of the main tenants of the Main Street redevelopment plan. We think it'll boost the city's tourism. And also, the light industrial aspect of this microbrewery operation will physically be located away from Main Street, which would be in furtherance of the apparent spirit and intent of the existing Main Street redevelopment plan. And the Main Street redevelopment plan, in its text, establishes a number of goals and objectives, including to encourage uses along Main Street, which attract pedestrian activity. We think we would facilitate that. Another goal and objective is to encourage uses along Main Street, which implement physical improvements and improve the aesthetic appearance of properties. So, and then in closing, we also think that a microbrewery at the site will have a beneficial and complementary relationship with other local restaurants, bars, and businesses. I used the word complementary, and I think Mr. Semet used a much better word, I think he referred to it as a symbiotic relationship, which means what's good for us is hopefully gonna be good for the bars and restaurants, who will hopefully be distributing our craft beer. So for all those reasons, we are respectfully requesting that the city amend the site-specific in a site-specific fashion to Main Street redevelopment plan to allow this operation to occur. We don't come here lightly. We know modifying a redevelopment plan would not be our first option, but for all the reasons I said, the clients felt it was worth it for the betterment of the project, for the betterment of the city, and that's why we come here.
Should we just go down the road? Yeah. So it allows for light industrial industry, so I don't have a problem with that, but the one thing that Don mentioned was with the fermentation tanks, that there could be an odor. So I would assume your clients are gonna ensure that that odor doesn't affect alley from Asbury, or any surrounding businesses.
Absolutely, yes.
That's it?
I was just gonna say, a brewery next to my favorite coffee place is heaven. I don't know what else I could ask for. I agree 100%. We need to start building up Main Street. We have a big void at one end, on each end of Main Street, that needs to be developed. We've been concentrating on Cookman Avenue and Waterfront for a very long time, and we've gotten things going on Springwood, so I think this is... And also, I have to say that my favorite organic grocery store, Cheetah Sprout, is also gonna be there. So I think we're seeing, starting to see that movement, and I think the microbrewery would be a nice addition.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Shall I?
Go ahead.
The door faces Second Avenue, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
And it's gonna stay there?
Yes.
Okay. You're, you talked about deliveries. Will you be having, will you own a panel truck that'll be parked there? Do you make deliveries yourselves?
I would defer this to Kevin, if you don't mind.
We will have, we will have a box truck that will be making deliveries to bars and restaurants in the area.
Okay, so I know that there's a loading zone there, but you'll need to park that on the street, I gather?
No, it's gonna be parked at your house.
It's gonna be parked at your house?
Yes.
Okay. Well, during the day, you'll just use it for delivery pickup day?
It'll be probably once a week.
Oh, all right, all right. Now, the other thing I wanted to ask about was, how much waste product do you produce?
Intervents do solid waste.
Yeah.
Very minimal. There's gonna be about 500 to 600 pounds of grain used in each batch, and it's gonna turn into beer, which is gonna hopefully not be wasted by anyone. But the grain, we have a, or a relationship with a farmer who's gonna come pick it up and use it to feed...
Oh, okay, very good.
For composting.
Thank you.
Wait, I do, if you don't mind, I have been at the city for over three years on parking and Second Avenue, and that large sidewalk we have that should be cut in half and better parking arranged for all of the businesses that are there, so hopefully this will spur Joe on too, because I, we even measured. I went out with Robert and him and measured, and I really would like, you know, I think it's gonna be longer than I'm gonna be here, I really would like to push to get that done for all of the businesses that are there. It's gonna make a difference.
And I am just very pleased that we're looking at a different part of the city, and we're trying to build up at this point not only the oceanfront and Cookman Avenue, but also this corridor as we expand into other corridors, and so I'm very happy about it.
No questions of Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you. So, and my recommendation is that you, Dr. President, that's on your work session candidate night, would forward this amendment to the planning board for their review and comments, and then they'd be able to give a response back to you, provided by session. From there, you can...
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, I have no question to you, but Mr. Semet, I have questions for you.
Okay.
Okay. How about your project? Your project's fine. Three weeks ago, you had us open up the CBD amended. Tonight, you're having us open up Main Street development for an amendment. Why can we not open up the Waterfront Development Area for an amendment? Why can that not be done? Why cannot the bowling alley be made whole? Why can't a temporary parking area be made whole? What is the difference? They're all redevelopment zones.
You have a, you can't forget about your redevelopment agreement with Ashley Partners, which requires collaboration, and I believe the word consent is used.
If they, so if they agree, we can?
Correct. Absolutely. Yeah, and it's the amendments we've been discussing with them now for quite some time.
I think you're asking about a zoning issue, which is different than an amendment, right? You're asking about why can't the bowling alley serve, why can't Pat Fasson serve his booze and food outside, which has been the problem through the summer? So if we're amending the downtown for a gin distillery, and we're amending Main Street, although the amendment for Main Street's kinda different, we're just saying, can we front, can the light industry front Main Street? We allow light industry on Main Street anyway, but with the liquor license or the, serving the alcohol and the booze outside, that's more of a zoning is saying no to them.
No, it's, it would be, zoning is saying no because it's inconsistent with the redevelopment plan.
Right, so why can't we open up the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan and amend that?
Well, he could make an application, couldn't he?
He could, I mean, but it's still the same as, you know, you need the consent of I-Star in order to do so.
Okay. So that's possible?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matters from the city council? John?
Yeah. Just one quick thing, an item of information which we talked about, we're gonna ask the city manager to start doing some RFPs for the new council to look at for some of the professionals. So everybody is agreeing that we can do that? No problem. Have we started collecting any court fees? And if you don't have that information, I should call you. So if you give me that information in the future, because that could be, if we started collecting some fees, we could anticipate that times 12 towards next year's budget, I would hope. A short, sweet question, I know you guys are meeting, I think, next Tuesday at 8:15, I can't make it. Are we ready for winter and snow? And ice and cold?
And are we doing anything different than we did last year?
Well, we are meeting, we are meeting at 8:15 next week, but I have been advised by our city engineer and our superintendent of public works that our salt shed is full, that we have a contract that is current with a salt purveyor, that all of the plows are operable on all of our trucks, that pickup trucks that normally did not have plows have, over the summer season, have been equipped with plows. So barring that we don't get three feet of snow at one time, we are prepared.
And I asked now, but I emailed also, when you have your meeting, just ask them if they mounted that 200-gallon tank of the liquid calcium chloride on pickup trucks so we can hit the streets that don't get suns, that would be a big thing. Springwood Avenue, starting becoming another parking lot for dinosaur DPW trucks, it just looks terrible. We have a New Jersey gas truck there that should be junked. We have a beach tank that's been sitting outside in the weather for three years, it's gotta be junked. Our beach tank broke down this year, we didn't use that as a backup, we borrowed Bradley Beaches, so it's just a junkyard that doesn't open on the west side. We have old truck four there, which, putting this on your snow question, it's a truck with a plow on it, with a $10,000 stainless steel solder on the back that hasn't been used in three years. Is that gonna be operable, operable this winter? If not, let's take off the stainless steel body and use it on another truck. You have a yellow truck there that's plowed up, and you have the Henderson truck that's plowed up, so is that becoming DPW West? Personnel, city personnel, and hiring practices. We've applied for three openings at DPW that have not been filled. The request went in January 15th of 2013. The request expires January 15th, 2014. These positions have not been filled, and this money's in the budget. So this, these positions either aren't necessary, or we're not hiring them for some reason, these are positions that to me could go to Asbury Park residents. So if you could look into that before the timeline expires, I appreciate it. Do we have a contract with Spectre Serve yet, since that was brought up in the June audit? That we don't have a contract and we're in violation of the law?
Spectre Serve being?
The company that's charging us $400,000 a year to take away the sludge, and we don't have a contract with them from the sewer plant?
We are in the process of putting out a bid for trucking. We have pricing from Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission, who coincidentally just called today confirming that they will hold their price. So we are just going to be trucking the sludge to Passaic Valley Sewerage at a much lower rate than we're being charged now. So we will not be renewing the contract for Spectre Serve or for any sludge disposal company. We're only gonna be purchasing the trucking, and the sludge will be dumped on Passaic Valley Sewerage.
Thank you, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
First of all, I regretfully could not attend Veterans Day. I'm sure the ceremony was excellent. We did not have off-school. I don't quite ever understand that, but we did not, and we celebrated in our own way. But thank you for all those who served. I didn't get to say that. Also, congratulations to those who won the election. I wish you luck. You have a lot to learn. Congratulations, and I'm confident that you will continue to move Asbury forward. And also, my thoughts and prayers go out to the Ron Conley family. Ron was a coworker of mine, a friend of mine, and he served the city of Asbury Park for 50 years as a lifeguard, and he just passed away. That's it. John?
Just real quick, Jack, I, we talked about the recycling, don't wanna see a repeat of what happened in the last two weeks. Matter of fact, I was actually stopped on the boardwalk from a business owner, asking what happened, because all their stuff was out and it wasn't picked up. Also, congratulations that everybody won the election, all the best. On this date, in 1864, Sherman started his march back to Atlanta. Do you know why?
Tired.
Atlanta was burning. Sherman couldn't be stopped, so you know what they named after him?
Sherman Tank.
A tank! There you go, finally. Don't you people watch the History Channel? Thank you, that's all.
Who doesn't?
Obviously, I wanna give a huge thank you to Sue and John for the work that they've done in Asbury Park and the redevelopment that's occurred. A couple of little things, just going back to John with the snow removal, because I will be at the meeting. So one of the things we wanna work on, right, is how we're communicating to residents in terms of snow removal, the roads that are being, you know, priority roads that will absolutely be cleared if we have any repeat of last year where there was, you know, well over a foot of snow several times. And then strongly encouraging people who have driveways to put their car on their driveway. And then I was hoping to get a proposal, whether it's implementable or not, we can talk about possible alternate side-of-the-street parking for snow days. So those would be three things that if we could, if we could have Joe and Robert kind of give some thought to, and then assess, and then talk about them next week. The boards, which was Pam's suggestion two meetings ago, which I couldn't agree more. Since so many of the boards are wiped clean, I would ask that a letter be sent to the... to the current board members with an application and a deadline for them to respond if they want to continue serving on those boards. So January 1, we're not scrambling to put boards together and potentially delaying projects.
Very good.
Okay, and then the last thing, which is probably a little more Don than you, but Jack, you and I have talked about it as well, the process of looking at our redevelopment zones, and in particular, the CBD, and de-designating it as an area in need of redevelopment, so developers aren't coming in and thinking that they're automatically getting pilots. So if we could have some sort of like memo on how that process begins and how we move it forward, and then eventually, I would imagine a vote on if that's something that we're interested in doing, certainly in the CBD. And is that, hold on, I have a thick packet. That's it.
I would like to also congratulate all those individuals that were re-elected and won a seat to serve City Council. There's a learning curve, there's a lot going on in the city, and many of you may not realize, but it is grueling to run a campaign. And I know that the people that were elected will not only continue to do a good job, but those new people on board will give all that they can. And I know four of those individuals are here tonight, but congratulations to those of you that weren't. I'd like to mention also, yesterday, Veterans Day, unfortunately, I was not able to attend. However, I heard in one of the radio, one of the radio announcements yesterday, that once someone has gone off to war, when they come back, they'll never be the same. And what we may think, for some of us, that they are, as they were previously, the experience has left a mark. And so my hats go off to all the veterans, and those of you that have families that have veterans. The last thing that I want to mention, and unfortunate, was not able to be videotaped, but there was a gentrification workshop October, October 30. And there were two different viewpoints by those presenting at this workshop. And to me, the good thing about this workshop, oftentimes the word gentrification is a scary word, and this absolutely was far from that. And I think one of the things that those people that attended walked away from was knowing there's a humanistic side of gentrification, but in addition to that, when you have developers, developers are here to make a money. It's a business. And so if somehow we could merge those together, we would be in good shape, because there's going to be a lot of redevelopment going on in the city. And that's it for me, thank you.
Matters from the city manager?
City Council, I have one item which I included in your packet. It was prepared by the finance department, I reviewed it with Ricky Garts. It is a worksheet for our best practices, and based on our score, the state will not be reducing any of our aid. It is, again, just submitted as information that you may want to take a look at at your leisure. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them either now or sometime in the future.
Matters from the city attorney?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just would like to let the public know that the council may be taking action on only one item this evening that was addressed earlier during our executive session, and that is an item that's already listed on the regular session agenda as item Q under the resolutions. And it's a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the city of Asbury Park authorizing an HMFA agreement for payment in lieu of taxes for the proposed housing project known as Renaissance, it was formerly known as Renaissance Village, but is now known as Renaissance, on Springwood Avenue. I would also like to indicate that item P, just prior to that, under resolutions, which was a resolution accepting and approving long-term tax exemption application submitted by EP at South Grand Urban Renewal, will not be acted upon this evening, nor will the second ordinance for first reading listed as item lowercase letter b, which also deals with the South Grand Urban Renewal Project. And that's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Selective.
All in favor?
Aye. We'll take a five-minute recess, let's see, 10 minutes?